I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Luke will be along, we're just going to go ahead and get started if that's okay with everyone, and we are recording the meeting today so that it can be put on our website. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone.
We have one public input card. And then, Dr. Moxley. Mr. Yocum?
Oh, I got to start first.
Well, you're up.
My name is Vance Yocum, I write the blog fiscalrangers.com. I want to talk about the item that's on your agenda, which is the International Baccalaureate. Dr. Christensen has done a very good job of explaining a lot of information, but I have encountered items on the other side of the issue. I sent out an email that maybe you got from yesterday. Earlier today, I finally was able to accumulate some more information, especially on costs, and I did an analysis of his information, and added a whole bunch of cost components that are not there. It just, you know, and actually, after I looked at, I think that the school board needs to set a policy to request that there be a professional cost estimation template that's used for programs, because you can't expect all staff to know all the things, and I think maybe the CFOs help, maybe you could develop something. I have got a handout I'm going to give you that includes a number of these things, and this includes an analysis by a Minnesota former school district teacher, member, board member, and he himself put together a very long list of all the costs, and he talks about it, it was between three to seven times the cost of the AP program for this program, and that, as a fiscal person, that's my first concern. My other concern is that I very much believe that a lot of the curriculum is going to be United Nations-based, One World, and it's anti-American, frankly. I've got samples of books that are, other people are saying are anti-Christian, and they've got quotes in them and everything else, and I think that it's both the curriculum and the cost of this program that are a real danger, and people need to know about it. And you should review that, too, before you come to conclusion. So I'll give you these handouts.
Thank you very much.
Your leisure.
Thank you very much. Is that the item you emailed to us?
Yes, that was emailed out to you, both of these, just about a half hour ago. I just couldn't get it all together before then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, board members, and thank you very much for being here. I hope everyone had an enjoyable spring break. We do have three items on our agenda this afternoon. Let me talk a little bit about these three items, how they came to be, and which ones are actionable. The very first item is an actionable item, it is the reason that we made this meeting a special school board meeting, because it is an overnight field trip. This is a trip that Leesburg High School students take each year. It is in Orlando this year, which makes it a contiguous county. The students, no problem with them staying, but because you have to have a teacher sponsor chaperone, and by policy, the teacher has to have your permission to stay overnight. So that is why that one is here, and we'll address that one in just a moment. Item 3.02, this is the time of year you have approved the strategic finance plan, that then becomes the source document that drives the first steps of the budget process that we have, that we're in the season to start, and I have some other announcements regarding timelines on that. But we also come back to you each spring with an update, and Mrs. Hobart is responsible for coordinating the strategic finance plan, the work teams gathering those reports. You have a full-fledged report on the website, it has been posted for everyone to have an opportunity to review. In keeping with our discussion that we had at Master Board about PowerPoints and that type of thing, you will see a very high-level executive number of PowerPoints that Mrs. Hobart will walk you through, and she will reference the document, but we will understand that you are very diligent about looking at your materials, and that we will address any questions that you might have, to be respectful for the time and the topics that you want to address. And obviously, the full report is there for the public, but we will only hit those highlights, not do a full page-by-page of the report. So I want to make very clear to those in the audience that that was at their request in the dialogue that we had at our Master Board in presentation. The staff is always happy to answer any questions, but we will not be doing a full-page presentation as was requested of us. And then, the third item, this particular agenda item did come at the request of Mr. Dodd. He asked for the staff to pull some preliminary awareness-level types of information, and if I understood what Mr. Dodd was asking us, because in our conversation, he knew that in order to do a full analysis of this, it would take a lot of staff time, it would take a lot of research, and it would take several departments to be able to do the full analysis, and we do have that initiative innovation tool that we, that came about as a part of that. So anything that has a significant investment on behalf of the district in an initiative like this IB would have to go through that process, and that required the board to have some perspective on it. So Mr. Dodd was very respectful of the staff and their time in the current projects, and he asked that could I bring this on a workshop agenda with a very, very basic amount of information, to then have the board have a discussion to see if there was even any interest in having the staff invest the time to do this. Many years ago, the staff did invest time to do it, and we had gotten halfway through an analysis, and really, then, the philosophy of the board was different at that point in time, and it had changed, and we had, you know, some new board members at the time, and the philosophy was, we didn't want to do an IB program, and we didn't want to pursue that, so the staff did not pursue completing that analysis and didn't invest any more time. So to our public input speakers, yes, that is correct. There is not a full-blown analysis to it, wasn't intended to, we weren't requested to, because of the time investment and what we would stop doing to do that. Mr. Dodd was very respectful of his fellow colleagues on this board, that that was a request to have just an awareness discussion. So the information that Dr. Christensen put together was just to be a starting point of what we have that was on the website, and from his past experience in what it takes to open up a program, but was not meant to be a full analysis. If that is something this board wants us to move in that direction, we will indeed go back and do all those parts, and we would do what it would be in Lake County. So that's how that came to be. So the very first item is an overnight field trip to Orlando for Leesburg High School Latin students to attend the Florida Junior Classical League State Forum in Orlando, April 8th through the 11th, 2015. Mrs. Ogles from Leesburg High School, she has sponsored this group for many, many years, and with spring break in there and the date of this trip, I'd like to recommend approval of this overnight field trip as provided in board docs.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Roseanne has the first.
Second.
And Mark has the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Neopose, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Moxley.
All right, thank you very much for that. And then, the second item, we'll move right into the strategic finance plan update. We do have a few slides to guide the discussion of the update, and the full document we can refer to as needed. And so, Liz Hobart?
So I actually have to tell you, I have the full PowerPoint here, but I'm going to skim, I'll just flip through slides and trust that you'll stop me if there are more questions. There are a couple of slides I will stop on for more in-depth input, because I think it's a report that you will be interested in. So you're welcome to just let me know if you want me to pause someplace. So the agenda for this report to you is as followed, as follows. We want to keep you apprised on the progress in terms of the strategic finance plan, instructional priorities, and the realignment opportunities. And so, if you remember, our focus is aligning our resources so they support our instructional priorities, that's the strategic finance plan in a nutshell. So this is a short report on the instructional priorities. We have two slides, each one gives pretty high-level detail on what's going on, and kind of a key comment that summarizes reactions. And so, we have the instructional priorities on the first two slides. I did want to point out to you that the Innovation and Program Evaluation Entities will be doing a report for you on May 18th, giving you the first metrics readouts on the instructional priorities, so you can look forward to that. Another thing that you can look forward to is with personalized learning for students, we've submitted our preliminary Phase III request for the Next Gen Grant, and that will be coming back to you, hopefully, within the next few weeks. We are waiting for that to come back, so that's upcoming for you as well. Then we have the realignment opportunities, and we have a couple of slides on that to let you know what's going on in a few minutes. The Maintenance and Lawn Care Report, we had set February 28th as the due date for that, and have that report as part of this presentation, it's the first time there's been a chance to bring that to you. And also, the ongoing work in transportation, to move from what's happening in terms of the bus routing to optimize bus routes, and doing a comparison between those bus routes to see where there might be savings and efficiencies to be gained. And you have the final realignment opportunities with a note that we have for the clerical and the guidance counselors' work groups' upcoming reports, June 30th. So then, I do want to move into the lawn care report with you, but before I do that, I just want to give a little bit of a frame to this. When we've worked with the strategic finance plan, we shared with you our outlook going in, our estimations. Part of this process is to take the estimations, and then really move into detail for implementation, and then based on what we find out in terms of the detail, move ahead, and that's what we hope to do, but if we find that the detail doesn't support moving ahead, pull back, because that would not be a good step for the district to take. And so, I want to share with you, moving from implementation in terms of the lawn care plan to revision of that plan, and I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to join me, if he would, in case you have questions concerning this. So I'll go through this at a real high level, and then allow for your questions or any others if I've gone too fast. So our original proposal was, first of all, originally, we were going to do K through 12 in terms of the schools that were included, and then we pulled back, if you'll remember, Mineola had some challenges with their athletic fields, and so because of that, we moved back to just do the middle schools and high schools, and our elementary and middle schools in terms of the plan. And then, our approach was going to be to have five ground care teams of four staff members for the middle school and high school settings, and we would implement in mid-year of this year. So as we moved into the detail of this, we did end up with some challenges. First of all, we were asked to add the athletic fields at the middle schools and high schools, and when we started working with the number of teams that included was the number of smaller teams, and that changed the financial outlook. We also did job descriptions for the lawn care team members, and that included a pay grade increase for the custodians. Additionally, the first evaluation of how this lawn care setup would work was based on a survey. When the actual detail was done, it was based on acreage, and when that acreage was considered, that resulted in an increase of six to seven custodial positions. So you have the increased salary, and you have the increased number of custodial positions. And then, the other thing that the group ran into as they were working their way through the detail of this, was that right now, custodians at the schools don't do lawn care work when there's going to be testing, because that disrupts things. If you're going to have efficiency with lawn care teams coming in, because they don't work evenings and weekends, they work during the day, there would be large amounts of time when the lawn care teams could not work. So those are the challenges. So ultimately, this is where we are, the current state, and that is that, given all of those things, we did not find the estimated savings to be available for the lawn care teams as they had been set up. And though, in this instance, we're continuing to evaluate other options, the original plan just is not working. Right now, pending the review of the lawn care work group, here's the potential proposal, and that is outsourcing that would provide $80,000 to $90,000 in savings for the athletic fields, and we believe that a bid could bring more savings to that. So that's the status right now of the situation, and I, and Mr. Davis is the one really with details, I was doing the overview, so I just want to make sure if you have any questions that they would be addressed.
Or I'll move on to the next section.
Anyone have any questions? Stephanie looks like she does.
I just, tell me how, is outsourcing less expensive because there's more availability in the people that would come in and do it, so it's more of like the bid process that would decrease the price? What's the, why is that more? Is it the training that's involved to keep up with the athletic fields? Is it all of the things that we have? I mean, I know things are getting more technologically advanced, so we don't have the staff that has the knowledge and the technology, and tell me what it entails.
Well, if we, if you look at Orlando, Orange County is a good example of, because, you know, Orange County has slowly, over the years, have slowly outsourced a lot of their, you know, a lot of their onsite lawn maintenance and care, tree trimming, every, some of it is reduction in liability or workers' comp claims, but a lot of it is, when you go and look at the types of staff that many of these groups are hiring, you know, they're low minimum wage type of staff, you know, when you, when you look at what, you know, we have a lot of people in our system who've literally been in the system 20, 30 years, and so, you know, they've worked their way up from other jobs, and their salary potential is much, much greater than it would be if they were on the outside working, you know, at that low-end, low-end scale, and so, what's happening, I think you see particularly in Orange County, is that they're, you know, they're hiring this low-end wage, which allows them to considerably compete in terms of value, and what we're suggesting at this point is only looking at athletic turf as it relates to outsourcing, because that's very unique in itself in terms of, you know, one, we've learned a lot in this last year from Lake Mineola High School.
Right.
We've had issues at Mount Dora, we've had issues at South Lake. We have just finished what we think is pretty close to a final draft of a standard operating procedure and an operational usage policy, and we've talked to some of the high school principals about that. It's, unfortunately for them, it's somewhat limiting in the amount of use, a lot of the fields that we are seeing problems on is it's basically just overuse.
Right.
It's just, you know, we're running JV and varsity football, we're running JV and varsity soccer, and we got lacrosse on some. I talked to Dr. Hunt at Mount Dora specifically about some issues that she had been having. One of the things that we've suggested, and we're working with Pat Todd, as a conduit way to work with the high schools, to see if we could come up with a district-wide policy and a way to try to implement it, but a lot of it is just trying to manage the fields in a little bit better situation, and I'll just give you one example, which you don't think much about, but we were talking to the county a couple of weeks ago of the new facility, if you've been to the new facility behind Sorento Elementary, I mean, it's just like the one in Imatilla. Very high-end, very quality, they're doing a great job maintaining it, but if it rains the day before an event, they're done.
Right.
They don't, you know, they allow the field to be inspected the day after the event to see whether or not, but typically, they don't even use a field a day after a rain. We've never done that, in, you know, in terms of our usage policy, in terms of the field, and sometimes that, you know, from a private point of view, it's a little bit easier, but if you're scheduled on a Friday night to have a major football game, and you get a downpour Thursday afternoon or Friday morning, and you tell everybody, "Don't come tonight, because we're not going to have a game," it's a little bit different situation, so we've got some issues to try to work through in terms of that. But by playing on that field during those wet conditions, you know, it's like running kids on it all week.
Right.
And so, a lot of those issues, we've got to work out in this standard operating procedure with the high schools, and try to find, trying to find a means and a mechanism in order to allow them to move a lot of the activity that's currently occurring on their major football field, soccer and lacrosse, and move them over to their practice field, which they, several have agreed that that's what they need to do, but the problem with moving things to the practice field is that, one, they don't have lighting, if they wanted to try to run it at night.
Right.
Two, they don't, a lot of them don't have irrigation.
A lot of them don't have a practice field.
And a lot of them don't have a practice field, but a lot of them don't have bleachers, you know, so there's some, so there's some issues related, related to that, and those are things that we're just going to have to work out, and we think Mr. Todd's a great conduit for us to try to coordinate with him, lay out what we feel is, how the field needs to be operated in order to keep the field at its top, I mean, we're not talking about what's called a, what's called an A-class field. Matter of fact, on the quotes that we got from the proposal, we did a C-class on everything but football, and football, we suggested it a B-class field. You know, A-class would be like a collegiate.
Right.
Which we couldn't afford if we had the money. So, and that's, that's why we're looking at it from, from that perspective, but we think athletic field would be a good start. We have yet to go back to the lawn care working group, which we'll do probably next week, review all the information that we've pulled together over the last month and a half as it relates to the athletic fields, talk about that with them, and then, at that point, we come back to the board and decide how you'd want to proceed. But the nice part about this is, you know, we've come up, we've come up with an estimate, we bid it out, we get, we get a bid, we know, we know what it's, we know exactly what it's costing us every year, we took every pound of fertilizer, every pound of top dressing, every hour, every minute of drive time for our staff, we've come up with a cost, we've looked at it from the school's point of view, we've looked at it from our ground maintenance crews' point of view, so we know exactly what it's costing us to do those fields. And then, the question would be, if the bid comes in cheaper than that, then it's, then it's something the board may want to consider, if it doesn't, the board doesn't have to accept it. So it's, you know, it's a question for the board to discuss, and we can move further with that.
Bill?
For me, it's about the competency, and when we were dealing with Lake Mineola, I think the superintendent and I attended a meeting, we learned more about grass than, very honestly.
You ever wanted to know?
I wanted to know. But, but everything from the method that you cut it, to the special lawnmower, to all that maintenance, and so, are we gaining that level of competency to take care of our fields? Because what I heard you, you highlight was, we're going to get minimum wage people, which these fields are much more important than that.
Correct.
And so, are we also gaining that expertise? Because I think at Mineola, we actually have a contract.
We do.
We have a contract to maintain the field for a certain period of time.
Correct, and the estimated contract amount that we got was from that vendor who maintained that field, so there, I was, when I was talking about the lower, I was talking more about the general lawn care, not necessarily the athletic turf.
Well, the turf.
Athletic turf's a little bit different.
That we, we.
It's a little more specialized.
Absolutely, I would be an advocate that it has, it is a specialized team.
Correct.
And so, looking at it from that aspect, more from what that hourly employee looks like.
Yes.
Is a little more important to me.
You're correct, yes.
Quite honestly, so I look forward.
You're mixing the two things together.
Yeah, like I say, I was, I was talking more about the general, general lawn care as a whole, in comparison to what we were talking about with the elementary and middle that we were talking about before.
We have to have turf experts.
But right, we, yeah, you have to have, and of course, this, this group that we currently have, and there's several groups in central Florida that do it, so I wouldn't hesitate to think that our, you know, our savings might not be greater than this, but again, that's the, that's the benefit of the bidding process, if that doesn't come, if the bids come in and they're not, you know, we keep, but again, we, like you say, we have to keep the competency level up of those that are in the process, because yes, we've got, we had one school mowing grass with a regular rotary mower.
Right.
A field, field grass with a regular rotary mower.
Actually, we had been at Mineola.
One of the biggest problems that we've, that we've experienced, and this is, was a big issue with Mineola, is handling the irrigation, and the number of people who, you know, we put a lock on it, and the next thing we know, the lock gets broke off, we put a bigger lock on it, the next thing we know, the door's broken off, you know, and so some of it is actually trying to take control over, you know, who is going to be, you know, if it's going to be a site-based management issue, are we going to turn, turn that irrigation control over to the vendor? Let them be fully responsible for it, which is, to me, is very difficult. If I have a lawn care guy coming in to do my yard, he should have some sort of control over the irrigation, not me. That way, I can't hold him accountable. If, if I'm controlling the irrigation and I don't turn it on, and he says, "Well, you got problems," and I'm going to have to spend more money, then, but that, that's an issue that we can address when the time comes.
So what you, what we are seeing right now is a hypothesis of where you think it will be.
Correct.
And then, as you drill down and write your request for proposal, I think that's fine.
Yep.
And we're only talking at this point about the athletic fields.
Athletic fields.
Yeah, okay. Because I think your question was very important to, to separate that, at this point in time, we're not talking about everything, we're talking about the athletic fields, and I think a lot of it is what we did learn as a result of Lake Mineola, and as we've had other conversations with some of the other schools, we also know that with the athletic fields, it takes the specialized mower, and when they're not mowing with that specialized mower, and we do have some, we know of one school in particular that's going to, we're going to have to invest, or they're going to have to invest in that specialized mower, and, you know, when you, now, that's another investment, and then, it is cheaper with the, because somebody else has already had that investment of that specialized equipment, and sometimes even newer than what we have, and then, they're responsible, and they're guaranteeing a level of quality of that field being maintained.
But I also think that the overwhelming issue is the overuse of the fields, though.
Correct.
Very much so.
Correct. We, that's one of the things that we came to understand very early in the game, and Mineola, I think we, I don't remember exactly how many, but we had 40-something games within a four-month period.
Yes.
On that particular field alone. So, but, but it's a bigger issue, again, this practice field, it's trying to work with the schools to let them understand, you know, the proper maintenance and use of the field, and, and like I say, I think Mr. Todd's going to be a great asset to us to be able to work towards that, that means with the, with the individual principles.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, then, I wanted to take you, just for a clarification that we promised to you as a board, and that's about the Innovation and Program Evaluation process. I believe when Dr. Doyle presented to you, there was a question about what does meaningful investment mean? And so, we went back and talked about how do we share with you and quantify that, so these next slides are about that. So meaningful probably was not the best choice of words, I think significant is a better choice, and that lets you know that we think that all investments in the district are meaningful, whether they're a small sum or a large sum. But when we're talking about significant, we're looking at investments that are generally over $50,000, where the scope of the program touches a broad segment of the district, and there's significant impact on students, teachers, and/or the structure. And so, these are examples of those kinds of programs that we would see, the Innovation and Program Evaluation work being used to, you know, put their tools of analysis to work. And so, the Strategic Finance Plan Instructional Priorities are key to that, so we can keep track of how well they are functioning, and then, these are the current programs that they're looking at, and you'll notice how broad the scope of these are. Achieve 3000, PD 360, Avid, and the PK through to, Pre-K through to reading programs, those touch large segments of the population. Those touch large segments of the population. They're big programs, they have a large impact. And so I'm hoping with that quantifying for you, you can kind of get an idea of what we mean by significant in terms of the program evaluation and innovation work. And then finally, I just want to update you in terms of the milestones for the strategic finance plan. We did delay, and part of that was due to my absence for a couple of weeks, the presentation to you of the budget recommendations from the work groups. And so, you'll see the new dates here. And I believe, actually, instead of April 13th, I'm just realizing that should be April 20th on that slide, at that workshop, we'll present to you those budget recommendations. And then on April 27th, we'll ask for your approval of those recommendations. So that's my update for you. If you have any questions, I certainly take them.
When you have the, the PK two reading programs, what reading programs are those?
I do not have that information, but I can make sure that we get that to you.
And I'll, I'll tell you why I ask, because I know we've, we're looking at, it's not a significant investment in terms of dollars, but it's significant investment in terms of time and resources. There's the I station and the I ready, and I wonder if those two would fall into this? So that before.
I station would.
Is in there?
I ready is in that.
Right.
I station would definitely fall into that.
Okay. So if it's something that doesn't, like you've got those three bullets, the investment generally is $50,000, and then scope of program broad, and the significant impact, if it's just two of those bullets, would that fall then into this as well?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know right now, there's not a cost associated with it, but there sure could be, and we probably want to look at that data before we.
There is a cost in the human capital.
Right.
Sure.
Sure.
I've got a question back on the instructional priorities page in regards to the instructional coaches. I was, I wanted to just seek clarification here. Because the bullet point says that it's support for 440 new teachers provided by eight instructional coaches. So are eight people, are 440 new teachers divided among eight people?
No. Actually, the number of new teachers, we have 440 teachers that are new to Lake County schools. We actually, I believe the figure is 244 teachers that are new to teaching, and those are quite different categories of teachers. I can take the, this slide back to that, so you can see that easily.
We usually have about half of the teachers that are hired at the beginning of the year. They may come from other states, they may have twenty-plus years' experience. They're, they've moved to, they've moved to Florida, they've moved to Lake County. They, so what they're, they're very well-versed in, in the art and science of teaching, and they have lots of experience. But what they don't know are the nuances of Lake County. Where, you know, where, which department do you go to for this? Those kinds of things. And so that's a very different level of support than a teacher who is coming into the profession brand-new, never taught before at all. And they come from two different segments. Some come right out of the College of Education, they've had an internship, so they're, they, they've just completed that, they've just graduated. Others, they are career changers, and they may not have had an internship. And so, those teachers, and those are about the 244 fall in that segment.
So the 244 people, so 244 people are being serviced by these eight instructional coaches?
Yes.
That is correct. But there's also more work than just the one-on-one instructional coaching. If you'll notice, they are, let's see, they're doing the new teacher induction trainings. So all of the new teachers in the district have new teacher induction. So there are ways that they are servicing those new teachers, but it's not the one-on-one coaching with them.
They, for example, we have staff members out of academic services that provide support and training on classroom management strategies, for example. And, and so, when you see here the multiple new induction trainings provided by instructional coaches, that they may sign up and go to this sec, section or segment, and the topic would be focused on classroom management. How do you get your classroom rules in order? How do you get systems procedures? How do you deal with this type of student management? And so they would go to that, if you call seminar, kind of thing, so they might be, there might be twenty in the room, and there's an instructional coach that is delivering that information. So that's in addition to anything that would be the one-on-ones that they would get at their schoolhouse location.
So the, the 1,620 hours, that's one-on-one time?
Yes.
That's not the group time?
Yes. That's the structured coaching support for this year, yes.
Okay.
And that was as of the end of February, so those numbers are.
That was a portion of a year.
Yeah.
Get all your answers?
I, I think so. You know, and I, I think, I mean, this is probably not the right stage in the game to question or not whether or not that's appropriate, because I've already done that a few times. But, you know, I think about my own experience, and I, I felt like it was a pretty insignificant one with a, with an instructional coach. And I think the ratio is probably about the same back then. I remember my coach told me that he had about thirty teachers he was, he was seeing. And, and I felt like that time was not valuable at all. The more valuable time was when I got mentoring from my teacher next door, or down the hall, or the grade-level chair. And I just wonder why we don't invest more in incentives for teachers to take on an NT? Because in reality, if I need assistance, I, I need it then. I, I'm not going to wait a few weeks for this instructional coach to show up for an hour, and then I might not even get the, you know, necessarily the one-on-one time to answer all those questions and work through those things.
So the question is the model of coaching. And there's, there are a number of different models out there. And the epitome of coaching and mentoring would be that we had a one-to, what was the new?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. One instructional coach per fifteen new teachers that were purely dedicated, because they would be there providing that level of support. I don't know of any district, unless you have a massive grant that is specifically targeted to that, can afford to do that. And so our ratio is up to one to thirty, is the lowest we've been able to get it. And yes, it does. And then you have to rely on, years and years ago, and this is probably talking twenty, twenty-five years ago, we had the other model, where classroom teachers who had reached a certain level of experience, went through a specific training, clinical supervision or clinical.
Educators.
Their Clinet, or, yes, I think is what it was called. Then you were then qualified to be a coach of a new teacher, and you got paid a supplement to do that. And so, what we found, you, they, that, those relationships were very valued, and you were able to do specifics. But what happens is that other teacher is teaching a full load as well. And so, you were not able to get into each other's classrooms like the other model does, because this person comes, they should have a time where they're actually in working with you during your class time while you're teaching that lesson. And has that follow-up? That's why we have invested through this realignment and this instructional priority to actually have a model where we have coaching protocols now, which is different than when it was four years ago. So now we have a very specific coaching protocol and tools that they use with the teacher, mentor, mentee, so that the dialogue and the discussion is much deeper. They've actually been in the classroom, they've watched the lesson, they've been able to give supportive facilitation, they've been able to have a conversation about, well, this group of students, they were progressing at this, here are the questions, here are the higher-order questions, and be able to really digest and dissect and break down that lesson with the teacher, because they're able to be in the classroom while they're teaching. The other model, you were able to give those, that conversation, but you weren't able to necessarily get in frequently to observe the lesson. So that's where the models are different. One's not better than the other. You know, the pure model, where you can have one to fifteen, and they're actually non-load-bearing and able to get in there with that teacher and do it, and it is that teacher next door with a partial load.
That accessibility is huge, because, you know, as I was just doing a quick math in my head, sixteen hundred and twenty hours divided among 244 people, that's, you know, I guess, probably about seven hours. So to think that a new teacher's only seen their instructional coach seven hours at this point in the year.
That, that may be seven.
Compared to what they're actually getting from the teacher next door.
And I know they're still getting things from the teacher next door.
Yeah.
Because, and they're getting it from their department head or their grade level, and, and many people have the buddy system.
Sure.
At the school level. That may be seven lessons that have been observed, seven-hour lessons that have been observed and had that. So you might get twenty hours, but none are observing any lessons.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just a different, it's a difference.
Sure.
You know, and I agree with you, it's not enough. I mean, it just isn't. I'd love to have the one to fifteen.
Is it, I mean, is it differentiated? So what I'm kind of thinking about too, in relationship to what you're saying, is I have some students that graduate college that I would never think I ever needed to step foot in their classroom, that they're going to be just excellent. I've seen them in the classroom, I've seen them there. But then there's others that I know will need the additional support. So are your instructional coaches able to differentiate based on needs?
What I understand has taken place this year, last year, we tried to do a pure model, where it was just exactly a certain number of hours, and it was so many, so many minutes a week of observation and coaching. And the coaches themselves said, "We're really uneasy, because some teachers need more and some need less." So they've been doing more differentiation this year based on that, as I understand it. Additionally, the program's grown, this is actually the second year that we've been working with the new teacher center to come up with the consistent coaching protocols. And they're nationally known and have done deep research in this area. So we've been trying to develop really a model program out of what was not, you know, was not refined. And so it's gradually refining over time. The other thing that I note at the bottom here is that they've been emphasizing collaboration with the site-based administrators this year. Last year, there was more of a disconnect. So there's been good growth in the program this year, coordinating with the school site and coordinating the need of the teacher with how much time is spent with them.
Is that what I was hearing last year, where there was like, people that were selected at different schools to kind of be that person, but I, there wasn't like a clear definition of what their role necessarily was? It was that, there's new teachers, but I don't have any new teachers at this school. So was that the development of this? Is that?
We were trying last year with that first year of the program. One of the things that we have wanted to do in our system is create a coaching framework, not just for the instructional coaches, which are one-on-one with the new teachers, but across the academic coaches.
Is that the fifty then that's included in that bullet here? Because it said eight here, but then.
Yes.
Training for fifty coaches.
Yes.
So those are school-based.
Yes, those are the school-based, the literacy coaches, math coaches.
Right.
Yes. Yes. And so, we're trying to create, if you looked at the title of this instructional priorities, Teacher Induction and Coaching Framework. So that it's not just the one-on-one coaching with the teachers, but it's also the academic coaches that are in place in the school, so that we have a universal language, a universal understanding of what coaching protocols are. And in the budget that will come forward to you on the 20th, you'll notice year one and year two training, and that's about, yeah, it, it works with extending this model, going deeper, getting better, all of that, lessons learned.
I think it's very important that Mrs. Hobart emphasized the framework in the system and the protocols, because that universal language and that common understanding, and we were trying to build the capacity for the very reason that if your school didn't have any new teachers, we, you still needed to have someone, because you could, in the middle of the year.
Right.
Have a new teacher, that your school needed to have someone that had the, the understanding there was at Universal, and you were part of that, so that we built the system with it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, thank you. Board members, just to make a connection here, as Dr. Christensen comes forward, and we'll switch over to his, his presentation. But on page thirteen of the PowerPoint that Liz Hobart just finished, before you close that one down, if you go back to page thirteen, this talks about the innovation and program evaluation decision here. And, and I, and I want to make the connection that when a decision is made, whether we're evaluating something that's already been implemented, to determine, did it do what it needed to? Was it effective? Do we need to continue this investment? Do we need to expand this? Do we need to move it from a pilot to a, a more formalized investment? Or is this something new, and we're doing it for the first time in Lake County, we need to do the analysis to see, can we afford it? Is it going to meet the needs of the priorities that we've established? What are the metrics that we're going to evaluate this from if we do decide to take on this initiative? Do we want to take on this initiative as a pilot and then expand it? Or do we want a full implementation? All those decisions, it's used in both contexts. A decision like this next topic would need to go through the system. So this would not be something that we would say to you, "Okay, here, we're going to go with this and go full, we've learned from this whole process, and that's why we put the system in place." But in order to run it through this mechanism, it is a time and there is a money investment of doing the analysis. And so that's why we're here today, to determine, is there the, is that the direction of this board that you want to do the analysis, one? Two, if, what information do you need to even be able to make the decision? Because we won't even begin to touch the surface of all the information you would need to make a meaningful decision. And you may need more information to even decide whether you want to even put it through the process. So again, we're just really at such an introductory level. But this indeed, this is a good example of, this would be the very initiative that would go through this process. And I believe, you know, the time element, this is not something you will do overnight. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Stivener, Superintendent Moxley, board members. Hope you had a wonderful Easter. Today, I'm going to give you an objective, factual perspective on the IB program. I appreciate the concerns on cost and content from Mr. Yocum, and I've offered to sit down with him and, and really review it with him, because I can give you the facts from my perspective, and also the perspective as a parent, who, when my own children have participated in this, and from the perspective of a principal and an associate superintendent in Fresno, who was involved in, with the IB program. So I'm going to try to bring you all that, but I did get part of the documents where he was outlining some of his concerns. So I start off here with a fact sheet, and you should have that, hopefully a copy of that in front of you. And just want to make a couple factual statements about IB. IB is a not-for-profit educational foundation. It started in 1968, it's forty-six years old. That's also my age, so I'm the same age. Supporting Governance for U.S. Schools for IB is based out of Bethesda, Maryland, so that it is U.S.-based support for this work. The advantage we have in Florida is we have what's called the Florida League of IB Schools, otherwise known as FLIBs. And that is a real advantage, because what that allows us to do in Florida is we can have all our training right in St. Pete. You know, around the country, when you have, when you try to put IB in place, you may have to fly to, you know, Nebraska, you may have to fly somewhere across the country to get training, but we actually only have to drive down to St. Pete. They now have a diploma program training down there, MYP, which is the Middle Years Program, and the PYP, Primary Years Program. American History is the primary element that is taught in the History of the Americas course. And in actuality, what I'll show you in a moment is, what does this look like from a, from a student seat? You know, as they walk through this program, what courses do they take? And a lot of times, we actually take American History in 10th Grade as a precursor for History of the Americas, because History of the Americas is a two-year course. So you're actually in that course for two years, and then you take a standardized exam for that. Initial startup costs for IB are significant, and I will get into that and review that with you. But the program, what, what may be left out sometimes when you're presented certain things, is the fact that in Florida, we get weighted FTE back when students are successful in advanced placement, for example, if they score a three, four, or five. Our district gets weighted FTE funds that come back, that can now benefit the next series of students taking AP. Well, the same thing happens in IB. And I can tell you from the perspective of being a principal at U. And I can tell you from the perspective of being a principal at University High School, and going from a 25% diploma rate to a 75% diploma rate, you know, by the time I finished and transferred over to Evans, I was getting somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 in weighted FTE back from all the exams that our students were having success on within the IB program. And keep in mind, these students are taking exams across six subject areas. So you're not just getting weighted FTE on one AP course, this is multiple courses. So there, there is funding that comes back and, and actually, not only pays for itself, but goes beyond that, if, if you have a high diploma rate. Now, you have to obviously implement IB with fidelity, and you have to do things the right way, and you have to obviously ensure it's done, done correctly. Just to give you some perspective from two local counties, in Orange County, IB was started at Winter Park High School. You may be aware of that. Later, it was expanded to Cypress Creek and University, but eventually, Orange County made a decision, this was a district-based centralized decision by the board, to expand IB to Evans and Jones. And this was a specific strategy, because those were two low-performing schools. They were F-rated schools. And over a five-year period during IB implementation, both those schools went from Fs to Bs. Now, there's many reasons why that kind of grade change happened, but IB was one of the, one of the programs that was implemented during that timeframe. In Seminole County, IB is only at one school, and that's Seminole High School. And when you check with Walt Griffin, their present superintendent, who was principal at Seminole High School during this time, this was a strategy to attract high-performing students. What was happening to Seminole High is all their students were going to Lake Mary, they were going to Lake Brantley, they were doing everything they could to avoid Seminole High School. And Seminole High School had a D-rate, derating, and there was no kind of anchor program that Seminole High had to keep their students. So over the course of five years, Seminole High School improved from a D-rated school to an A-rated school, and they've maintained that A-rating and have maintained a high quality of IB program implementation. So I know some, sometimes you're presented with various information and data, we have data from two local school districts that have implemented this. IB has its own separate, separate set of standards from Common Core. Those are not connected, the, it's a separate set of standards. IB is a comprehensive program. This includes community service, personal projects, extended essays, special courses like Theory of Knowledge. AP are individual courses. AP is not a program. Sometimes people say Advanced Placement Program, and what they mean is essentially all the courses that are contained within that AP, you know, there's 32 potential AP courses. But AP courses are individual courses, you know, students choose to take maybe AP, you know, art, AP World History, but those are not connected in any type of programmatic sense, whereas IB is actually a program with specific guidelines, which will, you know, get into in a mo, in a moment. But it should be said, in all those schools, Winter Park, Cypress Creek, University, Jones, Evans, Seminole High, they successfully implement IB and AP. So it's not like by putting in IB, you all of a sudden drop AP. You know, AP is still a key element within IB, and actually, a lot of IB kids take AP courses and vice versa. Not all students will go for their IB diploma, they may only take certain IB courses. So it, it's not like it can't be a peaceful coexistence, so just, just want to review that with you. If we could, now, I'd like to show you a document that kind of shows you what this looks like for a student, because as we present this to you, what these schools have learned and successful IB implementation, school districts typically first implement the diploma program, which is what the juniors and seniors do, and then they back map it, then they, then they look at Middle Years Program, and then eventually they add Primary Years Program. And this is an example from my former school, which is University High School, where I was principal for four years. I just want to show you what it looks like for a student to go through IB. So what a student needs to take is courses in those various groups. So it's the promotion that you will have a dual-language capability. So you'll have obviously significant work in, in the English language, and then you'll choose another language, be it Spanish, Latin, or whatever other course is taught, and you'll go deep into that. They also have social studies, which is referred to as Individuals and Societies. So in the case of University, those students were taking AP World History in 9th grade, okay? Then they were taking AP European History or American History in 10th grade, and I know it doesn't say American History on there, but that was an option for the students. And then they take IB History of the Americas, which is actually a two-year course, okay? In Sciences, all, all students that entered into IB took Bio in their 9th grade year, and then chose between Chem or Physics their sophomore year, and then they would basically get on a track that was either Chem, Physics, or Bio. And all those courses, by the way, are two-year courses. So you basically take a deep dive into either Chem, Bio, or Physics. On the math side of the house, you really, in order to be successful in IB, you have to have Algebra II knocked out by your sophomore year minimally. And actually, we recommended that Algebra II be completed even that 9th grade year, if possible. And I know in our Lake County schools, our middle schools, all have Algebra I for 8th grade, but there are some advanced students that go ahead and take it at the high school or take Florida Virtual School and try to get ahead and take that Algebra I early, and then take the geometry, obviously, in summer school or that 8th grade year, and then could go into Algebra II. But it is possible to be successful in IB math. And just to let you know, the content of that IB math is heavy, IB math studies is heavy calc, heavy trig, analytics kind of math. Straight mathematics is primarily focused on statistics, analytics, trig, and those type things. Also, IB focuses on an art or psychology side of the house, so you do have to choose between one of the arts. Over there at University, we had strong drama band, theater-type programs. So again, they would enter, they're, you're mandatory that you would be in drama band or art in that 9th grade year, and continue with that process throughout, and go ahead and get that, your junior or senior year. And then there's an extra course to IB called IB Theory of Knowledge, which is another alternative course. If you turn over to the next page, Natalie, this, this is the backside. So this has what's called the Middle Years Program. And at Evans High School, where I was principal for five years, we actually had the Middle Years Program and the Diploma Program. So we worked with Robinswood Middle School, which was our feeder middle school, and kids could actually start in IB their 6th grade year and know that they could get their diploma by the 12th grade year, okay? And just to let you know, most high schools, when they start IB, their diploma rate is somewhere between 20 and 25%. The worldwide average is like 50%, but we were able to get Evans and University up around a 70 to 75% diploma rate. So once you are in this, in this program, you would get your diploma. And when you get your diploma, you're looking at anywhere between 24 and 36 hours of college credit that you're then walking into your college experience with, you know, moving forward. But just the slight differences that you see here is very similar curriculum to what you just saw. It's just got the Middle Years Program as part of the connection to it, and students in MYP have to do what's called a personal project their sophomore year, where they essentially present something that's very important to them, that they work on over a two-year period. They present that to the community, sometimes it's community service-oriented, sometimes it's taking a deep dive into an analysis of, could be a, a literature, it could be math, but it's typically in one of those areas, Individuals and Societies, Experimental Science, but they pick a topic and they really go deep. And by doing that personal project, they then, at the end of their senior year, have to turn in what's called an Extended Essay, which is a 5,000-word, college-level Extended Essay. Well, they could do, potentially have the same topic from that sophomore year that they worked on their personal project, that they work on in the Extended Essay. But in the meantime, while walking through this experience, they also have to really go deep with community service. IB calls it Creativity Action Service CAS requirement. Over 100 hours per year that the students need to put in to give back to their community and, you know, work through different things. So that, that just, I just wanted to provide you that, to see what would it look like from a student's perspective? And now I'm going to quickly walk through this PowerPoint here that just gives you a little further information. Are there any questions? I'm going to just stop right there on the facts or the experience of the students within the curriculum. Do you guys have any questions about just either of those? Yeah.
Could you explain to me, and how, you said that the AP and the IB can coexist and it complements each other?
Yeah.
But it looked like, how does that model look? So you would have, and if you were in the IB, it looked to me like you're IB.
Right. So Natalie, do you mind going back to the document? How about the university one? Yeah, that'd be fine. Okay. That's a good question. So if, the way I would say, if you stay in IB as a diploma candidate, you stay in these IB courses that you see here, the junior and senior year. But what some students do is they say, you know what, my sophomore year, I've had experience with this, but I'm not sure I want to be a diploma candidate, I'd like to be what's called a certificate candidate. So certificate candidate means, I know when I came through school, I was strong in language arts and strong in social studies, not as interested in math, right? Not as interested there. So maybe if I was a certificate candidate, I would only take the IB courses in the social studies and the English, but then I might take AP courses in math, or, does that make sense? So a diploma candidate, this is what their schedule looks like. If I'm a non-diploma candidate, I might mix in some AP courses throughout this experience, and that's why it could be a peaceful coexistence. Also, keep in mind, in the 9th grade year, I'm taking AP World History, potentially. 10th grade year, I'm taking AP European History. So I might be in that AP European History with other juniors or seniors, but I'm only this 10th grader, but I'm getting myself ready for this, you know, very challenging curriculum, my junior and senior year.
I, I think the other thing too is, that's for an IB candidate student. But in a school, yours, one does not replace the other. So the IB program, if, if, take Evans, you have both programs. Sometimes there is a feeling that if you put the IB program in, the AP program's going to go away. And that isn't true, because your students that go for the IB program is this percentage of students, and you, because we've really been increasing our, and stretching our students through Avid and other means to go and pursue the AP program, we still have a lot of students that may not end up seeking the IB or be a candidate for that, but they are very strong AP as well, and, and they do very well in that arena, but have no desire to do the IB program. So, so that's where you differentiate and have those various options for students.
When you look around us, at pretty much every district around us, they have at least one school or set of schools implementing IB. Now, in Florida, the Primary Years Program is not as prevalent across our state, which is the PYP, which is elementary level. You see a significant amount of MYP Middle Years Program, which is grade 6 to 10, middle school, high school. And obviously, most districts have at least one school that implements the Diploma Program. And strategically, if you talk to Mr. Block, our former superintendent of Orange, he would say that if he could choose it again, you know, he wouldn't have put IB first at Winter Park High. He would have put IB at first at Evans or Jones. You know, that's where he would have made the initial, now eventually, they got to that. But in Seminole, they made the investment in this, first at a school that was struggling, because they knew, they, they knew there was a need to provide robust curriculum for kids, so they, you know, kids can be successful, go to college, you know, get the kind of support that they need and so forth. So does that answer your question, Mr. Mathais? Okay. Any other questions on Ms. Brandon?
I'll just share. I have twin nieces, they are in Volusia County. So they live in Ormond Beach, they drive to Port Orange every day to be in the IB program.
Spruce Creek High?
Spruce Creek High School.
Yeah.
So they did IB in 9th grade, and in 10th grade, they decided that rather than get the IB diploma, they were getting the IB certificate, and they're taking AP classes, and they're also doing, doing enrollment.
Right.
So when they graduate, the end of next year, they're going to have their IB certificate, they're going to have their AA degree, and they will have a higher grade point average because of taking AP classes. So there's a combination, as you shared, that, what you shared there. Now, one of the questions, you know, so many districts all around us have one school with an IB program. I know some families who drive from Lake County to Marion County, so their children can go to the IB program up in Marion County. So there are students that are leaving Lake County because we don't have a program anywhere here. So that, those are some things just to take into consideration as we go through this process.
And we are not in any way saying we would implement IB district-wide. That, that is not a viable, you know, and it also should be said in Orange and Seminole that they did make decisions, this was a school choice decision too, in that they made a decision, a conscious decision, to say, you know what, this is going to be a magnet. So they, they said, this will be a school choice issue, where if people want to take advantage of this, it really is a choice issue. We want to provide the best possible choices for our children of this district, so we're going to say, if you really want to be IB, you've got to go to, you know, Seminole High School, if you're in Seminole County. So the, what, today, as Dr. Moxley alluded to, we, we really just want to present to you what the Diploma Program, and enough about the others, what it represents, so that you would understand, do we want to go further? I, I will tell you too, the authorization process is quite stringent. This isn't something like you just check a box and you're in. Trust me, they put you through the wringer, and it's quite challenging to get, to be able to be authorized. And actually, Leesburg High entered a preauthorization process at one point, and it did not work out. And, and, you know, we would want to enter this with the, with everything aligned and, and have all our ducks in a row, so that we could be successful, if we did get to that point. But it does take about two years, so, you know, any decision that was made would, would take some time to work through.
Do we know what, where the, that's one of the questions I had written down, was for Leesburg High School, do we know where the, where the glitch happened, per se, whenever they did try to go through their program? Do we know that yet?
We, we can go back and pull that. I mean, I, I remember, I was a, a high school principal at the time, so I remember bits and pieces of it, that was a number of years ago, and I remember they got to the preauthorization point. I'm not sure I could tell you specifically why it didn't go further than that without pulling documentation, but we will do that.
I would like to say that.
You may know.
You need your mic on, please?
My son was in that IB program, the year that it was supposed to come on, and they were having it. And quite frankly, at the time, Leesburg High School didn't have a very strong staff teaching AP courses either. So, you know, we heard a lot of different reasons, and there were a bunch of kids that were signed up for it and, you know, doing whatever they needed to do to get ready to do it, and then it just kind of went away. And I have had discussions with some people since then, and I, I think it was, I mean, they had to hire a staff to be able to do that, that didn't exist at the time they, that it came about that year.
We would have that staff now, correct?
Well, yeah, that's one of the requirements. You have to have that and put all the training, and I think we've got a slide about the training that's required.
If I may ask one more question too? Are you going to speak about the Bright Futures and what the IB can do for your Bright Futures dollars? Is that something? I didn't see it in here.
I can.
Okay. Because I think that, that was significant for me too, and I heard it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think... Yeah, I think one of the perspectives that we could bring back to you is all the connections to scholarships now. If you look at University of Florida's freshman class, they're heavy IB. It's a heavy percentage of IB because they know what they're getting. They know what that takes to get that IB diploma. And us not having that competitive advantage, you know, in our district, you know, we want to have that competitive advantage. There are Bright Futures implications. There's also other implications in regards to, you know, credits that you're bringing to bear once you get that IB diploma and even, even getting the IB certificate. So I'll, I'll contextualize that as I move through this. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and walk through the PowerPoint here real quickly. The diploma program is the program that we're really talking about, and this is a two-year pre-university, and it's really a pre-four-year university-type coursework. This isn't designed for someone headed to a community college or a two-year or a junior college. It really is designed for somebody going four-year university, ages 16 to 19. Let me forward this for you. They take six subjects. It's now a 5,000-word extended essay. They've actually extended that. Like I said, they complete, complete a course in theory of knowledge and a number of CAS projects. Definitely recognized at our, at our universities and you can earn up to 36 college credits. These are the, the same subject areas we just talked about. So essentially, what they have to, what you have to decide when you enter your junior year is which exam am I going to take in each of these subjects? So you either choose higher level or standard level. The higher level exam is a much more intensive exam. The standard level is less extensive. The higher level is probably more difficult than an AP exam. Standard level is right on the level of an AP exam. So each student has to identify after their sophomore year, I'm going to go higher level, let's say, in English, I'm going to go higher level in math, and I'm going to go higher level in the arts, but I want to take standard level in science, Spanish, and social studies, let's say. So in any case, you take that coursework for your next two years, and then you take the exam, be it a standard level or higher level. What some students do and is an option, is you can take an exam early. So like, let's say you're in the standard level curriculum, is if you've advanced far enough, you could actually take the standard level exam your, between your junior and senior year and go ahead and capture that credit then. And then you can go deeper in other subjects, okay? And then you don't have to take all the, all the subjects at the same time. So sometimes students strategically do that so they don't have everything waiting at the end. You can also just give it a shot. You can take a standard level exam. If you don't do as well, that's okay. You can still take it after your senior year. Okay? So you have some options. And it should be said too, all the exams are heavy writing oriented and heavy choice oriented. So students always have eight to 10 choices. They don't have to just, they're not dictated multiple choice or certain things. They can choose between various options of what they want to write about to show that they're knowledgeable. Again, this is the course sequencing that I went over. This is the overview of the authorization process. So essentially, what we would have to do at first is be under the consideration phase. Then we would request candidacy. IB would then come in with a group and evaluate our candidacy, so you can see the steps for that. Leesburg got hung up, from what I understand, in the consultation process. So they didn't make it necessarily to the verification visit, from what I understand. So they didn't, there was never a decision to not authorize Leesburg. They just made a decision early enough that they just weren't in a position to continue the process of being authorized. Again, as the attorney alluded to, Mr. Johnson, I mean, you want to make sure that your teachers are trained in advance. You, you have to make sure they, they're ready to go. It can't be after the fact. And part of the authorization process is they're going to come back and check that. And in fairness to Leesburg, you know, eight years ago or 10 years ago when that happened, we don't, we didn't have the level of training we do now in St. Pete and the opportunities that are there. So there's a lot more flexibility and adaptability now. So, once they decide to authorize us, then we have to really get into the deep training, completion of all teacher PD, and then the school commitment. This is an initial run-through of fees. By the way, some of these fees are one-time, some of these are continual. So teacher training can vary, but the fact that we just go over to St. Pete, that's a benefit. The books, materials, once you have your books and materials, obviously, you're in good shape for a certain number of years. You do have to mail your materials out, so when you take your exams, those actually be, are graded around the, around the country, around the world, frankly. Our teachers, once they become more adept, will also be graders for other IB exams. So it's, it's a process where everyone works together to grade, and that's graded on an international rubric, international standards. IBDP, Student Registration, you do have to pay a $150 charge once they get that first IB exam, you know, taken. And then there are annual costs. So you can see, it's $11,000 per year. That was back in '14. That's probably gone up a bit. And I know Mr. Yocum referred to some other charges. I, I certainly am willing to take a look at what he's saying and take a look at this and, and give you a very clear idea of what you're getting yourselves into as far as cost. Because we want to make sure you understand every financial implication of this decision so that there's no question what's going on with that. In my personal experience with this program, this is the most important, it's called the learner profile. And actually, report cards were reflective of this. So when you think about what kids are learning, and a lot of times we talk to employers, what do employers say? They say they don't have soft skills. They don't have the ability to collaborate. They don't take risks. They can't talk in front of other people. They can't, you know, some of these fundamental skills. Well, this is what IB learners really focus on, and we, we, we would work with children to develop them, students, to be knowledgeable, to be good thinkers, to be able to communicate in front of groups, to be principled, to be open-minded, to be risk-takers, to be reflective about what they do. It really is emphasizing holistic, intellectual, personal, emotional, and social development. So this isn't just about academics. This is about the whole picture on how kids can change. And I will tell you that as ninth graders, I saw a typical self-indulgent ninth grader enter IB and then come out as a senior and be, kind of have a different perspective on how they want to change the world or make the world a better place or serve their community or these type things. I also want to make one comment, Mr. Mathais. Yes, sir?
When you read those, isn't that, I mean, why would we need an IB? That seems pretty basic that we would want to instill those values in a child that, regardless of the curriculum, right?
That's a very good question, and I agree with you. And by the way, in IB schools, what they preach is the learner profile reaches all kids. So even if I was a Level One reader and I wasn't in the IB program, that, that, that the student would receive development in these areas. But what IB gives you is some resources to work on these soft skills and materials to work on these soft skills. And also on the report card, kids would get evaluated, students would be evaluated in regards to this learner profile. Where do they sit in regards to being open-minded? Where would you rate this student in regards to being a self-advocate? You know, where would you rate this student in regards to being a thinker? You know, they, so all students within the school would be exposed to the learner profile. Now, that's a separate question, I believe, of what you're saying of, why wouldn't we do something like this for the whole district? And I, I think that's a fair question, but I'm just trying to explain to you the, the profile and how this can impact students and their, and their development.
Bill, so that I'm clear. Wasn't your question, wouldn't we be doing this anyway without the IB program?
As you read, those seem...
You can turn your mic on.
Oh, sorry.
This should be...
As you read what IB learners are striving for, that it seems to me that every student, we want to be inquiring. You know what I mean? That as you read them, it seems like that's something we ought to be teaching our kids today regardless of...
That's the way I took it, what you said.
Yeah.
Good point.
Which, which, I don't, I don't, I don't know that that's...
We should be instilling this in our students now.
What I, what I hear you saying is that's universal, not just IB program.
The IB program.
I think...
And if we're not teaching our students to be inquiring and learners, that we're kind of missing the boat already.
And I think when I look back on Maggie Teachout's, the Soft Skills Program that the business partners actually developed, those are the areas that they were very focused on. And I, so I think, I think it's true. It is a universal thing.
Do our students, do they do community service when they're 11th and 12th graders? So we already have that component as well?
That's part of Bright Futures.
Part of Bright Futures.
Well, they don't have to.
They don't have to.
But they want to get Bright Futures.
Right.
They have to complete 100 hours.
I think it's 175.
But not all students are...
It used to be 75. It moved to 100. But they don't have to.
But you don't have to be an IB either.
Oh, no, no. You, you don't.
Right.
Okay.
So you could be AP and you're doing community service.
That's correct. Because you're, you want to be eligible for Bright Futures, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what he was saying. Go ahead.
I think you also said you don't need IB to do this. Okay? And that's a fair, but I will tell you that when you don't have a framework to operate from, it's easier to say you're going to do something than actually do it. What they do is provide a framework. So that is helpful. I'm just saying for the teachers and the administrators to understand that. And, and Dr. Teachout and our business community has done a wonderful job within the CTE courses of implementing those, these similar elements of what are some of the soft skills that, you know, children are going to need as they develop to be successful adults. So that is being implemented. So maybe a crosswalk between the two would be interesting to do.
Yeah, that would make sense to me, that you have the experience, the successful experience of implementing. And if we took the best of the, it'd be interesting to me if we took the best of an IB and that framework and integrated it into, because these are just things that we would want, to strive for, I think.
I agree. Yes, sir. So, you know, there's really three programs. There's a fourth, but it's implemented within the diploma program, and that's the certificate program. But essentially, you have PYP, and this is essentially kids that are pre-K forward, you know, till, to 12, age 12, can be in PYP. That's elementary level. Middle years is grade seven to 12, and diploma 11 to 12. PYP, as we said, is, is designed to foster the development of the whole child. In a nutshell, there's five essential elements of PYP, and that's the academic, physical, social, emotional, and cultural needs of all students. Focuses on the heart as well as the mind. These are some elements, who we are, where we are, how we express ourselves, how the world works, how we organize ourselves, the environment, which they call sharing the What are some, what are the courses within that? So the arts touches how the world works and how we express ourselves. Math touches where we are in place and time, and also how we express ourselves. Who we are is touched in social studies. And language, how we organize ourselves, the science, technology, phys ed, personal and social ed. So these are some of those elements of PYP. MYP is, again, grades of six through 10, includes all major disciplines, does, you can accommodate the Florida State standards within these, okay? But it's not dependent on the Florida State standards, though its own standards exist. Essentially, what we're trying to do within MYP is have them take responsibility for their learning, discover how they learn best, be problem solvers, decision makers, be active in their communities, be responsible citizens, and also accept responsibility for the environment, making, maintaining an environmental fit for the future. MYP curriculum is a little more varied than the PYP in that it has these various areas. Now we get that second language that comes in, you know, Language A and Language B. And they have what's called the areas of interaction. So across each of these subjects, they're going to be asked to, within their personal project, address what's their approach to learning? What's their community and service orientation? Where do they see is the human ingenuity within each of these areas? How does this affect the environment? And what does, what's the health and social ed component of that? How are students assessed? So in PYP, teachers assess the students, so that stays within the schoolhouse. In MYP, they have a continuous assessment process around certain objectives for subjects. But again, that stays within the school site. So with, with PYP, MYP and PYP, none of those exams go out. With diploma program, however, they're assessed internally by the teacher and they're assessed externally. So they'll be given a rating. They may write an essay, and they'll get an internal assessment from their teacher, but then that same paper will go out and someone else will deliver an external assessment that will then come back. And then you compare the internal and the external assessment to get the, and the reason that's done is to ensure that IB stays at a certain quality level, okay? So it's a quality control issue. And it's also based on, you know, certain standards that they're holding the students to. The mission at the end of the day is to developing inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. IB was established back in 68 when, I know it was mentioned by Mr. Yocum about diplomats. It wasn't just diplomats, it was actually military personnel as well. In Europe, you had a lot of different military bases, and kids were going, high school students were jumping base to base and getting very different curriculum. So what, what they were looking at is how do we ensure a, a consistent curriculum across for our military personnel children and also the diplomats, diplomats' children? So IB was put in place in various US bases in Europe for military personnel children, diplomat children, so they would receive a consistent standardized curriculum. And then the curriculum was so, such a high quality that some schools back in the States said, hey, can we adopt that curriculum? Can we bring that back to the States with us? We like the way it's been set up. And that's essentially how, how IB came, came about. You know, it really was for American personnel across military, European bases, after this was post-Korean War, right around, right, you know, Vietnam and, and, you know, where they wanted that standardized curriculum. So I believe that's the end of the presentation. Yes? So any further questions?
Board members? Do you have any other questions? Mark? Stephanie?
Well, you know, I don't really have too many questions about it because I had the privilege of actually attending an IP program. I went through the IB program at St. Pete High. And St. Pete High brags about an over 90% success rate on their diploma candidates. So, I mean, there's, there's certainly some great things that they're doing too, and I hope that if we were to consider a, a model, that we would also look at, at what they do. Not because I'm personally invested, but because of the great success of the program there.
Yeah, St. Pete's very good.
And I, and I can tell you that I don't think anything else prepared me for college the way that the IB program did. That there were so many assignments that I would take, that I did in high school, and I would submit the very same paper into a professor... into a professor at the University of Florida and get an incredible grade on it. The quality is just that good of the curriculum and the program. And, and what that shapes a person into be is incredibly well-rounded, when you look at the number of different subjects that they're testing in. But I also think about some of the people in my class, and that there was an ability for them to really customize their experiences, you kind of alluded to earlier. I knew that I was going to pursue something in the liberal arts, you know? I ended up majoring in political science. And so I used my sixth subject there for psychology. I ended up taking some extra foreign languages. But I know of other students in my program who went to Harvard, who went to MIT, and what they did is they used some of their, their flexible scheduling to take higher level chemistry and physics, you know? So there is certainly the avenue to pursue the hard sciences. That, that leaves that door open for people. When we talk about competitive advantage, this is huge for any of our students, that I look at colleges across the country. And as I was applying, it became clear to me that colleges were going to weight my GPA differently for every IB course I had taken, as opposed to just any honors or advanced course, giving me an upper hand on any application I was submitting to a college. And when we talk about, you know, our, our state's really flagship university, becoming that much more competitive. Our, I know our parents in Lake County are begging for this opportunity for their students. I think we heard it quite a bit through the campaign trail this summer. A number of parents would come up and say, boy, I wish IB was here in Lake County. I know there's a real demand for it out there, and especially when we look at some of the caliber of our students that we've seen come before our, our board. Those are the exact people we need to be targeting, and I think we're selling them short.
Stephanie?
Um, I, I would like to know, a couple of questions, if you could come back to them. The biology is the only overlap I think I see, because you said Algebra I, you want it to be done by eighth grade, and the ninth grade would be Algebra II, and there's no EOC with that. But are students going to be able to, are they going to have to take the biology end of course as well as the IB assessment, or is that something that the state of Florida is looking at?
The, for the ninth grade year, because that's not an IB, it would be like a pre-IB course, they would take the EOC. But once they get further into it, like taking the diploma, no.
Good.
Yeah.
The data from Leesburg High School, if whatever we could get there, if it comes back to teachers or whatever, it'd be really nice to know how far they got in the process. I know I've spoken with Mr. McDaniel about it before, but I'd like to get some facts about it. The funds, obviously, we've talked about. And I, again, I think that in lieu of, I think that if they get the IB diploma, it completely gives them 100% of Bright Futures. Like, I think it's guaranteed 100% Bright Futures scholarship.
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to that.
That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's 100% guaranteed Bright Futures, and it just, it's an automatic, it's a lock. And even if you're a certificate candidate, as long as you knock out so many boxes, you're 100%.
You're 100% guaranteed for Bright Futures, so I agree.
We can give you the specifics on that, so that you can speak to it, to parents?
And for consideration too, I know that you can pick the, you can pick the courses, like there's required readings for each of the courses, and we can go through and pick the courses. So it's, the curriculum is not out of the control of the school board in regards to, there are some that are less aggressive or less biased in other areas, that we can, we can pick those courses. We can pick the texts that go with those courses to, for Lake County schools, if that's something that we are concerned about.
That is absolutely true. You have courses you can pick in the arts, you have courses you can pick in social study. Yeah, I mean, we could, and what text we use for History of the Americas, if that's a concern about, you know, making sure it's deep enough in American history. I mean, these are all specific, specific to our district that we could look at.
And I know I've spoken to people in Marion County and Brevard County that also have said 100% Lake County kids come over there because they're missing out opportunities here.
We're losing students.
I know, when I, when I sought this position, it was to advocate for kids, and what I want for my kids is this opportunity. So it's what I want for all of kids for Lake County schools, and it's definitely something we need to analyze before decisions are made. But I think it could have some huge implications for the students in our county.
David, maybe you know, but I've heard over the last few years, they've been talking about Bright Futures, and the amount of money that the legislators want to leave in there. Is that going to be a program that continues on or not?
Dr. Moxley, would you want to?
I want you to be a fortune teller.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not privy to that.
I, I have not heard anything deflecting from Bright Futures at all. But I do know that it, it like, it does come up periodically, but I have not heard a discussion as of late on that.
I know I've heard that during the recession, more than I'm hearing now.
Right, yeah.
So I don't think the cuts have been.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate that going away here, at least within the next year or two.
Okay, cool.
I, I, I hear from two board members, you are really liking, would like us to pursue more in-depth analysis. But I, I want to make sure from board members, because I will, I, I do know that we are losing a certain percentage of high-performing students because they want the IB offering. I believe there are some controls that, as a board, you can put in place. It is a monetary investment. And my thinking on it would be that we would do a very, we'd do a preliminary analysis of it from a budgetary investment, so that we have that in time for the budget process timeline, because you would need to put that in a priority lineup, because just like Dr. Christensen said, if the decision is to move forward, you're still looking at two years to, realistically, I mean, to, to have the first class started. We can put students in the hopper, just like, it's kind of just like the Health College Academy. We're, we're starting the class to, you know, next year, but it's to have students in the hopper, two years at the, at the college. So this is kind of the same thing. We can have the plan, and while we're getting the teachers trained up and getting all that, you would start your candidates in that kind of pre-IB curriculum, which would be an AP curriculum.
Roseanne, you had a question?
Well, no, I don't have a question. I just wanted to, you know, share some information as far as going forward. I would like for us to continue to evaluate this, and if you can come back with some, some numbers. But also, do we have the talent here in Lake County to be able to, you know, have the teachers in, in place to teach the, to teach these classes? I think Lake County is, is missing out. Not that we, as you said, maybe we can pick one high school to try the program and see how it works. But I know three doctors whose children go to Marion County for the IB program that could be, you know, right here in, in our schools. And it's not for everybody, but I think in order to be competitive, and also to have options. And I can tell you that I have a five-year-old niece and nephew that are in the IB program in St. Pete. So, which is astonishing to me, but, but, but they are. So I, I think it's something that we, we need to look at. It's not for everybody, but it could be an option for, for some families.
And obviously, parents would be giving their permission for their son or daughter to participate with full vetting of the curriculum, because we would, we would know that before, because you would take that out to the, to the parents and to the students, and they would know exactly what they're signing on before they sign on, because it is a commitment of the studies, the writing, all of that. And students would need to know that going into it. So parents would definitely be approving their child to participate and knowing what they were going to be.
What they're getting into, sure.
But, and what the content would be.
And in choosing, I'm thinking of transportation. You're saying that your, your family drives them to get them to that school.
For Spruce Creek High School, there is no transportation provided. You have to get your, you've got to get yourself there.
Well, the doctors that are driving their kids to Marion are also driving their kids to Marion.
Right, well, their kids are now driving, but, but yes.
So we need to figure that out too. I mean, the number of students that we really would be transporting, if they were in the zone, they could be transported, that type thing, versus making it, if they're choosing the school, I mean, their high school, then their parents will be driving them, or someone else will be driving them. So it's not a transportation cost.
No, you would look at it as a school of choice option, and you would place it in an area. And so students would have access from all over our county to that program.
And provide their own transportation.
That's how it's being implemented in Orange and Seminole, is it's a, it's a school choice magnet. So if you, you know, if you live in the zone, you get the normal transportation, but if you're outside the zone. And I knew we were starting to do well when we were starting to get kids from McCoy, Apopka, College Park, coming to Evans to go to school. So when, you know, I mean, you know, you're, you've got the ball rolling when people come out of zone and they're driving their own children there.
Well, I, I personally think it's a good thing for us to go ahead and move forward and see, do the vetting that we need to do on it, and see what the costs are, pros and cons, and help out the kids down there, and their kids.
What does that mean, go forward?
To do the process, to find out what the monetary costs are going to be, what the advantages are. Work on a two-year process, because that's what it's going to be if we do that.
What, what we would do is we would get the tool, the analysis tool, that's part of the Engage process. And we would put the, we would put a timeline together. We would do a draft of a project management timeline and plan. That would be very preliminary at this point. But we would, I would focus on the cost analysis. So we would actually, here's what has to be done, here's the timeframe that it has to be done. We would do the, and look at an enrollment for, to, to gain, here's the numbers for the capacity. We would also do kind of a site analysis for the location. We would also do an analysis to go back to the, what, how many teachers would need to be trained, and what's the timeframe of that, and where we have gaps in that with that. So, yeah, it would, I mean.
It's going to take a lot of work.
Right. But I, but again, the budgetary numbers, I think we can do a good run at that here within the next 60 days. But that's why I said the project management timeline would be a very draft.
And the one thing that I did like that Stephanie had said was that the school board can pick the courses and the textbooks. We keep getting concerns about the textbooks that our students are having to use, because they're on the approved list. If we're able actually to make that sort of decision, I think that's great.
If that's an accurate statement. Or do you choose from two textbooks? Like, you know what I mean? So.
Well, that's, that's why I want more information.
That's right. I think that, that if we are saying that we're at the very beginning of steps of really looking at, because I don't want to take away from our AP programs, just so that we're on the same page, that, that we, so I'm not, if it, but it's going to be resources, and it's going to be dollars. So let's, let's evaluate it from, that's my concern. Most of the presentation, quite honestly, I felt like should be happening in, if we were just talking about general education in this presentation, like the critical thinking.
We should be doing all this now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so regardless, if we can't ultimately, as we look at the dollars, then we should maybe look at the framework for implementing some of these strategies, maybe.
I think the other part here is that if, what I heard from some of the comments is that we have students that are choosing to go somewhere else other than Lake County schools. If by offering the program here in Lake County schools, how, you know, how many FTE dollars are actually going out of the district that we would recover and keep in the district to offset that? I'm not sure how to quantify that, but we'll think through that.
But I think that if, if we are, if we are looking at three students, then I'm not certain that's worth the expense of this program.
And I don't know how to quantify that.
So, so, well, we've got to know, what, couldn't we get it from the other, these other IBs? How many?
We could, and as we walk through the ROI tool, I just want to, again, reiterate that weighted FTE comes back, and it comes back sixfold, you know, versus AP where, you know, the max that a student takes is maybe four their senior year. I mean, they could take six, but that's pretty rare. Whereas in IB, once you get the train running, you have the, you know, that these students are taking six at a time. So those scores are coming back then the following year in the term, in, in weighted FTE, back to the school district, back to the school, to benefit that next round of kids. So we'll try to show that as well as we analyze, because that is two, two years out, though. So we have to be realistic on what the upfront, because it is significant upfront investment, and also where to put it. As Dr. Moxley said, a site analysis on what is our philosophy in Orange? Initially, it was Winter Park, you know, the highest performing school got it. That was their philosophy at that point. Later, the philosophy changed, and they said, you know what? The two lowest performing schools in our district need this. We believe this is a turnaround model, or a component of turning around these schools. And that was to turn them into A-rated schools, so.
The other piece of information, I believe, in this process that we need to also look at is, we've talked about what it is to get the program up and running. But there's different, there's different decision-making points for this board. And so we're, we're going to say, we're going to go to the next decision-making point by doing this budgetary, you know? What is it, putting it in the lineup? Because it is a cost investment, there's no question about it. Can we afford to do it? You know, what are we giving up if we afford, choose to do it? You know, are we doing it in one location to serve the whole district at a large? Or the demographics, meaning the mile, square mileage, and the way our district is laid out, you know, to give equal access? Do you need to site locate? You know, I don't know. All those things have to go into place. But I can also, we will do an estimate of, okay, to go to the next decision-making point, what's it going to take in staff time to be able to get us to that point? Just like the Leesburg thing. They had a large investment of time going into that process to get to that consultation time period to find out. And, and I'm glad Mr. Johnson remembered that, because I couldn't remember that detail. And, and to get to that point, we want to learn from that, because we don't want to go all the way down to that point and then say, okay, we're not doing this.
Right.
There will, so we'll try and map that out.
I love the opinion, though, if you're beginning to look at dollars, I think you'd be looking at two locations minimal, in my opinion.
Well, by the way, our district is laid out. I, I understand why you're saying that.
And I have two in mind.
And, and it may be, it may be we only can afford to do one, you know? I mean, so we'll look at it in that, you know, and that's why I said a site analysis would be, here would be first site, here would be second site. Maybe it's just the economy of scale to bring two online.
Umitella, sorry. Did you just say?
But just to weigh in.
Can I ask?
Every of us moving forward.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It just says we're all making our statement.
Can I ask a clarifying question on your fact sheet?
Yes, sir.
It said, we get weighted FTE back from student exam score at a three or higher on diploma. Is that right, a three or higher?
Uh, sorry, that should be four.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that correction. IB graduate would catch that, a four, five, or six.
Or seven.
Four, five, six, or seven. And seven is rare, but yeah, four, four through seven. Did you get any sevens, Mr. Don?
I did on higher-level Spanish.
Look at you.
Oh, my gosh. Well, we need an interpreter. I'm calling you now. Okay, any other questions? I think we have a direction.
Good, thank you, thank you. Thank you, good dialogue. I have very clear direction. Thank you.
When is your meeting with Mr.? When are y'all meeting?
Uh, we'll set that up.
I can't wait to hear about that one.
Okay, board members, it's time for any comments you have.
Okay. I'm sorry, people are waiting, that's it. Okay, so just to kind of follow up, I really just jotted down some notes. I think it's really important too that we look at having Dr. Christensen as our academic service lead here with our assistant superintendent, and that he has been successful in implementing these programs before, and that he does have some experience with IB. So I think that that is something that we should consider in regards to the timeline for implementation of this program, that we have somebody that's done it. And that's, I think, can be a, a big advantage for us. Already said, Umitella, I don't want to say that again. I'm totally kidding. But anyway.
It's not a struggling school.
That's, I, well, that's okay. It doesn't, it's, anyway.
We'll be data-driven.
Here's my, there you go, there you go, there we go. Be data-driven, that's fine. It's okay if it's in Ustis too. So my other, my other thought was this, is that, you know, I, I really appreciate where, where Mr. Mathias is coming from and the framework that we should be doing this as a district. But the more I, the more I grow in an understanding of how big this machine is, it's so hard to control all these different parts. And I feel like our instruction is a piece that is lacking, and we've kind of talked about that in the professional development that needs to happen to support our teachers, because everything else seems to be driven by other things, and that's the components overlooked. I know I had an AP course that I can tell you was not to any level, that would be a credit to any student. I think that we have a shift in leadership, that we have principals coming up now that are instructional leaders as opposed to building managers. I think that all that's coming with the shift of the standards, that we've got to have these leaders that are instructional leaders, that know what good instruction looks like, and that can go into a classroom and see a powerful teacher. and see a powerful teacher leader, and talk about that leader, and have a plan for how, a lot of the stuff we talk about, I feel like if we have those solid leaders in place in these buildings, we can see these shifts district-wide, elementary middle, and high school without any kind of a program. I feel like we do have some strengths in there that we can capture, I know we're talking about the leadership pipeline and those types of initiatives, but I feel like there's a lot of the issues that we could solve with that strong leadership component. I also think that when I was talking to a different county, I believe it was Marion County, they said they don't have any teachers that are full-time IB teachers, because they feel like those IB teachers were their best teachers. She said, point blank, my IB teachers are my best teachers, so we have them teaching IB courses and regular or lower-level courses, so that all of the students benefit from the expertise of these teachers that are their better, brighter teachers, stronger teachers. And then I also feel like we should talk that if it's at one high school, two potentially, it's definitely not going to have a dramatic effect on our AP. I mean, all the other high schools would maintain the AP students that we have, and I really feel like there's some powerful models that have the AP as the pre-course or courses that step into the IB program, and that it could be a really nice marriage or partnership pending the course changes, I know they're looking at some of that curriculum base, so, that's it.
Thank you. I don't think I've ever heard anybody talk as fast as you.
I can talk fast. We're recording today, too. That's, I did want to say that, that's fantastic that we're recording today, so we can pick it up and slow it down a little.
When you're listening to Stephanie, that's what you do, is you slow it down.
That's right, that's right. That's right, Yumetilla.
Yes, I have, I have a couple items I'd like to express some gratitude for, and one is the time that your staff has spent, and you, Dr. Christensen, to take a look at compiling this information about the IB program. I know that, that was a request of mine, and I know that Stephanie had mentioned as well with the board member priorities. I was excited to hear the other support on the board to be able to continue the process, and I look forward to the next bit of analysis that we get regarding that. I have two, oh, my, I said two items of gratitude, that was the first one. The second one was that we are recording, and I think that's fantastic from a transparency standpoint, especially, you know, when you consider the time of day, folks can't get out here to hear this, this discussion that we had, and I know that it's a great topic of interest across the county, so it's wonderful that folks will be able to go back and listen to that. Second item is, that I have is in terms of some community-type things, I know, I think we all got this letter from the UStus City Commission about a workshop, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it.
Yes.
Yes.
But since multiple or all of us are probably invited in participating in a workshop-type setting, it sounds like there's discussion.
It's scheduled to be advertised.
Is it?
Your chairman's already taken care of that.
Thank you very much.
Diane Kramer, I took care of it.
All right, excellent. And also, in terms of community, I know over spring break, there was an article that appeared in the Daily Commercial in regards to school usage facilities, and, you know, from my philosophy or ideology of what a school is, I view it as kind of a cornerstone of the community. And my understanding is that the policy, there's some schools, I guess, are more open than others, and so I'd be interested in having some conversation at a future date to dialogue of whether or not that that's something that should be given more direction from a district standpoint.
It's on the agenda.
All right, done, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Roseanne?
I'm good.
Bill?
Yeah, I do want to speak to these IB, and where I think that as we're looking at a strategy that goes, it will go beyond the lifetime of this board or the next board, so it's very important that the community, also there's the buy-in, and so I would really emphasize that as we are educating stakeholders, like today it was very encouraging to me that we would have control over the curriculum and textbooks, I think that's extremely important to those that might be concerned that it's some part of Agenda 21 or somewhere out there. The idea that we offer these students that opportunity, and you're absolutely correct, Mark, I think that, and Roseanne, to use my own example, my son, I was telling Dr. Christensen earlier, my son's two study buddies in honors, both came from IB, in his very first semester he came and said, Dad, I wish I'd gone through an IB program rather than Trinity Catholic, which was totally college preparatory, anyway. So, so it's very important that we, while we are looking at our lower quartile, that we also begin to stay focused on that upper quartile, and that we offer them the same opportunities. But I am concerned that this is, that we, if, as we go through this process, that it's a sustainable model that will outlive many boards to come. And with that, thank you.
And that's a good point, Bill, because we will all be gone, and it'll still be going on. The other thing I wanted to do is to say happy birthday to Roseanne, she had a birthday while we were, another one of those momentous days in your life. A lot of things have been going on, and I have had conversations on the facilities, because I have been working on that since I got here, so we will bring that back as a workshop, and Lauren Duritter and Pat Todd did go to the Board of County Commissioners and present what we have been doing, and, and there are many organizations that use our facilities, it's just not open unless it's scheduled, and those are, those are some questions, but that goes back to the overuse that Will brought up, so we have to keep all that in mind when we're talking about it. Been working on many things, and I'm going to let Dr. Moxley, because I've got the same list she does, and I'm going to let her do it.
Thank you very much. I was approached by Sandy Moore from the Leesburg Chamber, and I'm passing out to you a copy of a mural, and this is a draft mural. Actually, Sandy Moore was approached by the Leesburg Center for the Arts, and there is an artist that is part of the community, grew up in Leesburg, and wanted to have the community do a mural on the wall outside of Rhimes Elementary School. And if you go down the road, you'll notice there's that, the city cleared, they own that property there, and it's all cleared, and then you'll see our fence, and then there's a wall that goes that in, in, in the school's on the other side of the wall. And that wall is just painted yellow, the same color as the school, and so they approached the city of Leesburg, so the city manager and I were contacted about how they would go about getting permissions to do this, and, and so this is preliminary, I don't have any other information other than the Leesburg Center for the Arts, and that the city manager and I were contacted. This is a draft of the mural that they had, and, and my conversation with Sandy Moore was, is that I would be more than happy to bring this to the board, that we would definitely want to see what was going to be painted on the wall, we would want to know how they were going to go about painting it on the wall. In speaking with Mr. Johnson, obviously, we want to make sure that liability of getting it while it's being painted, who's on our property, who has access, when they're going to be painting it, all those kinds of things, because I know there is a certain amount of space between that fence and the wall, you know, how, is there enough room to get in there to paint it, you know, how long is the mural going to last, the paint, because, you know, you want it, you know, when it's up, it looks great, but over the years, and it deteriorates, you know, all those kinds of things. And so, you know, in looking at the mural, you know, I, I think there's certainly the message that they want to have there, and there's not anything that is problematic from a school district standpoint, per se.
What is the middle? That's, I'm saying, what, are those?
They're hands around the sun.
Hands around the sun.
They're hands around the sun, yeah.
And there's water, rocks, rocks.
Those are rocks.
Those are rocks. It's like a waterfall, and the other things are buildings with the little, yeah, and then that's grass.
So, these are all hands?
And that's water.
Yeah, those are hands.
Those are hands, holding on, unity around the sun.
If you look at it on the computer, it's clear, you can actually see the hands coming in.
Mr. Johnson, I am a, I am a member of the Leesburg Center for the Arts, so should I disclose that? I just did. Thank you. Anyways...
The community ought to be contacted, too, whether or not they want something...
And, and I, that's, I think, the role the city of Leesburg was going to do.
That's what they're doing.
But the fact of the matter is, the wall is ours.
They just had to ask us first.
And, and they would be painting on our wall, it would be on the outside, so it really doesn't impact the school at all, because the school's on the other side of the wall, you know, that...
It will front 468.
The impact would be, while it's being painted, what access and who and when are they going to be painting and controlling the safety and security of the school and the access, and we can work through that. And again, any liability, and Mr. Johnson, I know that, I'm bringing this for disclosure to you of what the request is, I want you to be able to address anything that...
I'm not keen on it.
We would need to...
Not?
At all. I'm not keen on it, personally. I mean, long-term, the maintenance, it, I donate some proper, some signage to one of our schools, and it, as it fades and goes to pot, or we really want to be in the business of maintaining that, I think not.
I don't know that you would maintain it, I think, when it started.
You'd just be making phone calls.
No, we would just be painting.
Over it.
We would maintain the wall, yeah.
I mean, I would not recommend that you do this unless you had something in writing with how it was going to be done, because not only is the maintenance an issue, but what happens if it's sold, somebody else uses it for some other purpose, or you just decide you want to paint it white again, all those are going to have to be covered in some type of written agreement, so if this is something you're interested in, we're going to need permission to move forward and talk to them about it.
And that's what I'd like for, I mean, like, that's what I personally would like to do. We did a mural here in Taveries, and it's on the old Clerks Building, which was the bank before, and we've had more compliments on that in the community than anything, because it represents the history of the place. They're trying to build community, and this is your community, Roseanne, there, that feeling, I think if the attorney can come up with an agreement with them that works to cover maintenance, liability, whatever other issues they are, it's a good thing for the community, but that's my personal opinion. Everybody else?
I, I agree with Debbie. Steve, if you can find out who will, I know you can put a gloss over top of something that lasts a period of time, but will they maintain it if it starts to fade? And then, like you said, if we did sell the property, that knowing that the next person that owns it may want to just paint, paint right over it, but it's just what a coat, I mean, you just take a coat of paint, you paint right over. I'm just thinking that if they're willing to do this, and it's not going to cost us anything, then I think it would look nice.
Other board members, comments, concerns?
I, I think I would also like to see what, what that agreement would look like in terms of upkeep and maintenance vandalism, you know, are we going to be expected to come out in some emergency situation and do some repairs because of something painted vulgar, you know, across, you know, we certainly don't want the schoolchildren to be exposed to anything like that. And then, you know, what are the final arrangements for this mural when it is no longer maintained or it's served its course?
And we'll be happy, because I'll follow up, and, and with Mr. Johnson, and we'll speak with Sandy Moore, and we'll talk with the city manager and, and see what that draft would look like. You're not, this is not an actionable item, I just wanted to bring it to you, if you were totally against murals on our walls, then certainly I was going to say, thank you, and we're going to keep our wall, you know, the plain color that it is, and, but I do think there is a community tone that they're trying to set here, and so we'll just pursue more information.
Okay. Okay, the other item that I wanted to share with you is, I think it was Thursday of last week, and we were on spring break, the House and Senate did do their preliminary budget runs, and, you know, this time of the year, usually they're far apart.
Yeah.
And we know that when the governor puts his budget out, you know, that's kind of a starting point, and then they work through the process. Well, when Carol got here this morning, she had been monitoring it over the spring break, they're very, very, very close, and so what she did is she worked real diligent to give you some basic information, so I think we're at a really good point that we can start running our numbers at a much earlier time period than we've done before. So, when you look at this, Carol did a memo to us, and she did a side-by-side comparison and attached that, and so this is a document, again, we will, we do budget workshops and that kind of thing, but I wanted to get this in your hands, she just gave it to me just a little bit, finished it right before the workshop started, so I wanted you to have it, as well as I will be looking at it, I really haven't digested it yet either with that, but we will, we will, you have it now, you can digest it, and then I'm going to ask Carol on our next workshop to actually formally walk through it, we'll update it as we go. Now, as part of the budget process, we usually start with a budget timeline, and it's usually around the month of May that we start, you know, putting draft budgets together. Mrs. Luke and Mr. Dodd, I know being brand-new board members, traditionally what we've done in the, in the past, when there's been the majority of the board is, is new coming in, we do what we call the Budget Process 101, and it's really, how does FE, how does the FP formula work, where do our monies come from, how do they factor in, you know, how, and then Carol will run this through the formula. I know that the other board members have had that probably, well, some of you, six, seven times now, that probably, we thought, we probably need to differentiate some of our information at this point in time. So, what I thought about doing is scheduling an afternoon that is convenient to the, to both of you, we will advertise it, and actually, Mrs. McLeod and I will come and we'll do budget, the preliminary background information, and do very informal, you know, ask questions, and, and any board member, we invite any of you, but I also know some of you have had it so many times, you probably could be on the other side teaching it.
I can certify you, too.
Right, right. But we thought we would do that, and, and again, anybody that is interested, we would walk you through, and then I think we'll start the process, and, you know, we'll answer as many questions and take as much time as we need to, and then you will be as up-to-date as everybody else here. The other thing that I have been doing is, from our retreat, I've been keeping a, you know, I kept the list of some of your priorities that have budgetary amounts attached to them. We actually have a now template that we have been putting items down, and that, from your comments, and the staff will start costing those out, because we, you know, when you look and say, okay, here's, there's money coming, okay, well, yes, it may be coming, but it may already be, you know, in the hopper to, to different things, and so you really need to know, we have an approved strategic finance plan, we will, those are called the have-tos. Here are the have-tos. If there's increases in fuel or electricity or any of those things, we factor any of that. If there's growth, we factor all those things in for the increased number of teacher units that we'd have to, those are those have-tos, and then we keep, it's just like your checkbook, this running, here's what you have left to make some decisions on. The other, the other thing we'll walk through with the Budget 101 is, what are school-based budgets, what are district-based budgets, and what are the roll-forward budgets, what are one-time fees, what are recurring, what are non-recurring? We'll walk through all of that, so you'll have a good foundation of, of where we have the decision points there, and then we'll go through a prioritization. So, I think it's a little different than what we've done before, because we've done the retreat and we're ahead of that, and so I think the starting point that I'd like to do is, once we do the Budget 101, is then do the, let's get our want list, our wish list, out there, and we can give the calculations, the budgetary cost calculation estimates to that, and then we can just start prioritizing at that point in time and build the budgets with that, so if that's agreeable.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay, with that one. So, that'll take care of that. The mural I talked about, Matt?
Actually, I'd like to...
Oh, sure, yes, we will. Is there a particular day that's better than others?
Go ahead. Is it this, this month through shooting for April?
Yes, we need to do it this month.
Tuesdays, I teach until 6:00. I don't, I don't go back in the county.
Tuesdays are not good.
Tuesdays are no's.
Okay. Any other day is good?
Mark, if any restriction, no?
How long is it going to be?
I think probably we'd be two hours.
So, we could do it before a workshop or before a school?
We could do, or we could do it in, we could do it on Monday morning, mid-morning, would that work?
Yep.
Okay, okay, we'll look at a Monday with them.
It's fine. Perfect.
Okay.
But you were. It's amazing.
Well, I was just trying to tie it in.
Sure, sure.
Nailed it.
Mrs...
Which day would you like?
What date? No, what date?
Oh, whatever day, okay.
Yeah, it'll be within the next two, it won't be next Monday, because we have Central Florida School Boards Coalition, but the third Monday is where I'm headed. I would like to do it within the next 10 days.
Okay, with that. The other item... The other item is, Mrs., both Mrs. Steyman and I believe Mr. Dodd talked about the use of facilities. We did have two of our staff members go and presented the Board of County Commissioners. There were a lot of questions about the facilities being open on the weekends, particularly to walk the track. And we've had conversations about that, and, you know, one of the biggest concerns is, is that leaving facilities open and walking the track is one thing, but access to your football fields that are in the center of those tracks is a whole nother discussion. So, it's not an easy discussion to have. But we have that on the workshop, so, with that. And we'll bring all the, whatever background. I did have a request from Mrs. Luke to pull information about the uniforms with it, and I needed to let board members know that we were asked to do that. And if there are other items of information that I need to pull, I'd like to do that all at one time. So, I am in the spirit of being transparent.
Right.
And that was because of the Senate bill that just passed.
Right.
Of course, that has to be signed by the governor.
Right.
But what I am doing is I'm having a staff member break that bill down to say, "What does that mean? What are musts? What are have-tos? What are, if you'd like? What does that mean as far as the incentive? What would that mean in Lake County?" Most of the information that we had done before were options that had come up as suggestions. That's the data we have. But if there are other data points you want pulled, I, I would like, if you could let me know those data points, we'll pull those.
Boom.
I'm not sure when we said we were gonna have that, is we're coming up on budget, we were going to look at transportation costs to reinstate within the one mile?
Yes, that's...
And so, that would be something I'd be looking forward to seeing.
Okay. Are there any other data points on uniforms?
Oh, I'm sorry. You were just talking about uniforms. And I want any kid in the courtesy bus in a uniform.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, I know we've gone down this road multiple times, and so, I wanted that, the, what I was requesting was the back data from that.
Okay, you want the background, background history? Okay.
Yes.
Uniforms.
Uh huh.
Okay.
In, in regards to the courtesy busing piece, before, did we, did we talk that we would look at a couple of options, the half-mile and one-mile? You know, half-mile for elementary? Okay. All right. Because I think you just said one-mile, and I want to make sure that half-mile was still an option that we would look at for elementary.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Thanks.
It's half-mile and one-mile for elementary.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much on that. And Master Board, we sent some tentative dates, I believe. Mrs. Challenger had sent an email out about some tentative or some...
I didn't see it.
Maybe I'm, maybe we didn't, you didn't get that, we didn't do that before spring break. Okay, we did, okay, good, I'm the one that's all...
We inquired, I got the dates.
I know when I get that question mark, that I, I have the wrong information. We were looking for a date in May, one in June, and then one either in July or August to keep it going, and they said that was fine. We could do it every month if we'd like to, to get it done. So, I, I went ahead and, and we were gonna look at one afternoon, it's four hours. So, it's three four-hour sessions, one in May, one in June, and then either one in July or August. It's whatever your choice is. And then, we'd be done. So, it would keep it going. If you'd like it spread out further, we can get it spread out if you'd prefer.
It just gets it over if we do it once a month. Does that rain? It's what it sounds like.
And we, and, and to be consistent like that, then we can use the knowledge that we gain from it in our work, because we picked three really good topics.
And if you spread them out, just what Dr. Moxley says, that way, we've, we've got the experience and we've got the knowledge from the facilitators to help us deal with the issues we're, we're coming up with. And that's all I have today.
As a preference for dates, if we're gonna do that, again, for me, it would be nice if we tied it into, now, the opposite, if we tied it into a meeting and then went into a board meeting.
Okay, so like, do it in the morning and then have the board meeting in the afternoon? On Mondays?
So, we're not consuming a whole bunch of days.
Yeah, I like that idea, too.
Me, too.
All right, we'll, we'll look at that. I think when we were talking about it, we had talked about staying with a Monday or in, now, we were looking at Tuesday afternoons, but I'll know Tuesdays are, are off the table. We have had some questions about, for some additional information on the ABC. If you have any other additional questions, please make sure those are coming to us so we, we get all the information that you need. That's all I have.
Okay. There were a couple of other things I didn't finish. I wanted to thank the maintenance crews that have been here, as well as the ones that we've hired, the outside companies, working on the renovations for the building. I guess you've noticed all the new windows. They did all that last week on spring break. They'll be working to complete that, and they're doing a great job. Will, if you'll relay that to them. And I think, and they're also working on Dabney as we speak. And I got two phone calls today from two different doctors who are looking at that site now that it's being cleared. So, I just want you to know there is an interest, and I knew there would be, once it's down. So, I think that's, Mr. Johnson?
Actually, there's one thing I wanted to say.
Oh, no.
Sorry. I read this morning a Supreme Court case that was just decided, a Florida Supreme Court case that potentially could cause us to expend some money. It was a Lee County school, a student, I think they were playing soccer, fell to the ground, collapsed. Coaches came out and attempted to resuscitate the child. Eventually, he was resuscitated by a automatic defibrillator by the ambulance that came, but he was, his heart had stopped for long enough that he was severely injured and will be in a hospital the rest of his life. The issue that came up was whether the school board had a duty to have the defibrillator actually at the site of the game going on so that somebody could use it. Apparently, the coach had called for it, somebody to get it, and it was never retrieved during this approximately 20-minute time period before the ambulance got there. The statute says that if you participate in FHSAA sports, that you're required to have one at the, at the school site where the event is occurring, and you're required to have somebody trained to know how to use it. Now, the issue before the court was whether a jury was going to get to consider that was a duty of the school board to have someone there at that particular game when this child was injured soon enough to be able to use the automatic defibrillator at the site. Normally, that would not have been a duty that the school board had, because this was a fairly new statute, and, and these issues have just come up recently. The court said that it was going, the Supreme Court overruled the appellate court for Lee County. The appellate court for Lee County said that the school board did not have that duty. Its duty was to have it on-site and to have someone who could tell the emergency medical responders where the unit was in order to be able to use it on-site. The court, the Supreme Court said, "We're gonna let a jury decide the issues of whether there's a duty on the school board to have that particular piece of equipment at the point where it's needed and to be able to timely administer that equipment when it's needed." Now, that issue comes up, what if you have two or three sporting events at a school at the same day? Do you have, do you now have an obligation to have somebody actually who is trained to use the defibrillator at the point, the location of the sporting event, and being there ready to use it immediately if something happens? And if you do that, do you have to do it at all events for all your sports that you have everywhere? And that raises an issue about, you know, what other kinds of duties could you have in those particular kinds of situations where you're having athletic events? Is it not, then, gonna be a duty that you have to have an ambulance at every sporting events, ready to take the child to the hospital immediately without having to wait? So, the case, the actual case from Lee County hasn't been decided, so it may be that the jury would find that that's not the duty of the school board. What the Supreme Court has said is that it's not gonna make that determination as a matter of law as it oftentimes would have. It's going to say that that's gonna be in the future a factual issue for the jury to determine each time something like that happens. So, it's a potential for being fairly costly, depending upon how the jury comes out. Yes? Yes?
Thank you.
For me, it is ludicrous that we would have the equipment and not have somebody that would know how to use it at the events, personally. So, I think that if we don't, if we have these defibrillators, and if we, then certainly, I would expect, we'd have someone that knows how to use them.
They are trained.
I think, I think the question that I hear is that many times, we have a basketball game going on and a soccer game going on, and we may have three sporting events, but where is the, so does that mean we have to have three defibrillators and three staff members? Because they're right, there has to be right where the game's going on. That's what I heard.
But wouldn't it be if you, if you had three events and a campus is within a couple of minutes, that by the time, I mean, it seems like to me that if there's three events, that one person would be responsible and would be able to...
Well, unless you're a facility like Leesburg High School, where you have tennis in one place, your golf matches at a different place, and your soccer games in a third place, and you're swimming in a different place.
Well, that would dictate that you need more than one.
Well, the two areas is the same way.
That's what it's saying, that you need, I mean, that's what it's implying, that you would really need to have today.
Depends on the campus.
Yeah, the majority of our older campuses are all over the place. They're not all...
Well, I believe that then we should have, we should, that would be the minimum, is that we would have them at, y'all assess it, and do we need to buy three or four or whatever? Or you limit the activities, one or the other.
And isn't the athletic trainer trained to use the defibrillator?
They are. Yes, they are.
Because we always have an athletic...
But they're at one location.
Right, right.
You know, they're at one location.
Right, okay.
And...
Yeah, because they'll be playing on Taveries High School field soccer team, and then our baseball will be having a game over on the complex that's four blocks away. Our athletic trainer is over there, not with the soccer players. So, it's, it's personnel and money and...
I think we ought to do the analysis. I mean, regardless of the lawsuit. I don't care about the lawsuit.